We will then. Okay, we'll go ahead and begin. Commissioner Fiedler, let me know if you need me to pause to get better connection or swap between devices. Good afternoon. It's 1:04, March 23rd. We are here for a Board of Commissioners work session, and on our agenda, we have the mayor bringing to us a proposal to vet for a two-day enduro event. And then we have our other item would be, will be the county manager physician next steps prep, and just keeping the conversation going on where we are at with the hiring for that position. We've got Commissioner Fiedler present. I'm Commissioner Mudge. Commissioner Marcela is representing the county at legislative consideration on the front range and will join us if and when she is available to, if the timing works out. But Mayor Labey, would you like to take it away on the two-day enduro event? And would you like me to pull up the proposal or any other documentation for you?
You can do that. And I think that we're, I'm hoping that Jeff and Kim Kegel are on the line, and maybe also Brian Davis. I'm not sure who was, oh, there's Jeff and Kim. Cool. And Brian, are you here as well?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I did notice that you're, it says Husky Factory, but you're gonna have to change that, right?
I will have to change that.
Okay, alright, just checking. Okay, I want to preface this by saying that we're not asking for any approvals today. I mean, I think you understand that. The county commissioners do. We're just trying to find out if you think this is a reasonable use of county land, and before we go forward with the permitting process. He's the, the proposal we have in front of you is something called a sprint enduro. Now, I have to say, I've been riding enduros for over 40 years, and I, I've never ridden a sprint enduro. They are fairly new, and they really have to do with smaller availability of land. But they are time trials. And, you know, I think this is in the bicycling world, it's very common to have time trials, closed course time trials, and that's what this would be. And we'd have three different trials in here, running each of those three twice each day, and we'd repeat that on the second day. And those would be timed to the second with transponders. The Enduro Circuit uses what's called LiveLaps. It's a nationwide organization that does that, timing for athletic events. Actually, every time I go on there, it's, they usually show bicycle events. But they also do motorcycle events and a variety of other, other things. But it is transponder timing to the second, and really, in a sprint enduro, that's the only way you could do it. We want to do this the last weekend in June. We've kind of checked the, the Lifetime Fitness has their, their marathon heavy half for that. There's nothing that I could find scheduled on that weekend. We thought that would be a good weekend to, to draw people in. You know, spec, to draw riders and families to spend the weekend here. You know, it's good, good for, for the community in terms of, of the economic driver that it, that it represents, but also less impact in terms of any overlapping events. So we would want to use land down near the motocross track, and as I put the map up, we'd use the motocross track, and there are actually some little trails right inside that motocross track property that we could use. And then we use, and if you look at the power line, we would use land to the south of the power line. I think it's south of the power line. How did I, how did I represent? Yeah, south of the power line would be test number two, and north of the power line would be test number three. And we, you know, a lot of it, we don't really know until we get out there on the ground and really lay it out. I'd like to, you know, give you an exact course, but we, we're not sure what that is, especially a first, first time event. This would involve the motocross track, and Jeff and Kim have, have done such a stellar event with that. I wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, you know, it, doing anything that would affect their operation. They have, they have kind of enthusiastically embraced this event, so I really, I really appreciate that. And, and, and we're looking forward to working with them on this. Also, I went out to Colleen, just to, just to touch base and say, what do you think of an outdoor event like this with limited participants? And she said, not a problem. She really was going to work for these big outdoor events, thinking of them more in terms of green and about five, a limit of about 500. That's a conversation she and I had a couple of weeks ago. We don't know what the future holds. I know all of this is contingent on, on where we are with COVID and restrictions, and, and, and everybody understands that. The city does the same thing. Whenever we give a permit, okay, we can give you this permit, but it's contingent on the health department, you know, being okay with, with what you're doing. And then the third special test would be on the north side of that power line road. I also reached out to Michael Irwin to check and make sure that there wouldn't be any issues with that road, especially since it's an XL easement. He said, although it's an XL easement, it is also a county road. And he didn't see any issues with that, so I appreciated that. I've tried to touch base as much as I can. And then, again, if the, if the county commissioners think that this is, is a, something that we, we should, we should be allowed to go forward in, in asking for a permit, we'll do that. Any questions on any of that?
Yeah, great. Sorry, it took me a minute to pull up, instead of rotating the, the document that you shared with us.
Right.
Just pulling up the, the map for the orientation. But the, the, this is the archery range, and this, the area you're talking about would be in this?
Yeah. We would have to avoid the mineral belt trail. We'd have to be very careful about
Right.
where we put our trails. But yes, that is the area. That would be test number three.
Test number three, okay. And then the, the whole event would take place on this section here?
No, then that would, that would just be one of the three tests. The second test would be down below the, the, the power line road. And you can see that the gun range is there. And so we would, we would put some pretty tight woods trail in there. Yes.
In this area?
Yeah, that area, it would kind of wrap around. You could see it kind of, the county land kind of wraps around the woods there and comes back. Yes, that, that's, that would be number two. Test number one would be the motocross track itself, and some ancillary trails that actually exist around the motocross track. You can't really see it very well on the map, but they're there.
Oh, around, just around it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then you had mentioned before at one point, are you, is this, is this kind of formalizing or improving existing trails?
No, the, those trails actually don't exist, and we would, we'd do two things. Number one, we'd have to ribbon it off to show where the trails go, because there are no trails in there. I know, I can tell you personally, I've ridden in there, I've ridden in both those locations. Just, just because you could ride through those woods, they're fairly open, comparatively. Not a lot of ground cover. But we would also mark them as, as closed for the rest of the year. And you and I talked about this, I believe, and one of the reasons is, with a gun range and one of them, and an archery range on the other, they're, they're simply not going to be safe to be used year-round. And I wouldn't want that to be the case. So we would, we would, we would actually put signs up, warning people, you know, gun range, do not enter. I mean, you know, that doesn't give them the hint. I don't know what, what would. And the same with the other side, the archery range. Now, part of the catch here, one of the things that we're going to ask for, is that for those four days, that those two venues would be closed, just for safety reasons.
And then where, so the mineral belt is here, and then the timberline trails, do they come into this land at all through, through? I think those trails are in this area, correct?
Well, if you're talking about the college, or what do you?
Yeah, the non-motorized, the, the single track trails beyond in the timberline trail area.
Well, you know, I don't see them on this map, and if they're in there, I can't see them. So, and I've, I've ridden back in there. I don't remember seeing any.
I think, I think they might be.
I said, I think once you go, once you go past that county line, I think that you do pick up, but we wouldn't do that. We'd stay within the county property, and we would not cross the mineral belt trail.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I would just, I would just work with Sterling and the Wheelers, because I think those trails come in just a little bit over here. Make sure you can have that mileage and
Okay, good.
whatnot.
We'll use Sterling Trail, Sterling's Trails, it's fine.
I don't think they want you. You're gonna ruin them.
We'll improve them. No, I'll talk to Sterling about that. I'll have him go out with me, so, so that we can look at that layout.
Yeah. All right.
Yes, please.
Hey Greg, it's Brian here. We, I don't think we had talked about going that, anywhere that far east, had we?
Well, it depends. She's, she's talking about, and you may be right, I mean, Brian, because again, it's, it's, it's a, we're going to have to, to vet it on the ground. You know, we're not gonna really know until we get out there, we really walk it, we really see where other trails are, and make sure we're not encroaching. We, we have no intention of doing that. But, but I don't know if we'll go that far east or not.
Okay, yeah. I, I hope they understand that that's not our intention, to go onto existing trails and
Incidentally, Brian, would you, would you introduce yourself, and then I'll let Brian speak to this a little bit?
I'm Brian Davis. I'm the one who's coordinating and promoting this event. A lot, obviously with Greg's help. Longtime, I've been racing dirt bikes for 50 years. I've always wanted to promote and put on an event, and this piece of property kind of fell in love with, with the motocross track, and we're trying to, if we can make it happen.
Hi, Brian.
Hi there.
Um, I, I know Michael Irwin is here, and Greg, it sounds like you chatted with him, but Michael, and then hunted over to Kim probably, and the managers for the motocross track. But Michael, do you see any, any considerations to ask of the group? Or requests or concerns?
I'm trying to unmute. I really don't. I mean, it's pretty much in an area where there's nothing going on, you know. I know they have, that time of year, they have some archery shoots, but and the gun ranges are busy. That would be my only points of contention.
Coordinating with other events?
Yeah, I mean, to make sure that they're not interfering with them, or, you know, they will shut, are they willing to shut down for the weekend? I know the one public range probably would. We could do that, that, that's county. But I couldn't, can't talk for the private range.
You know, Michael, I think the private range also is, is further up the road, and, and that range is, shoots due west. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
No, they shoot to the south.
They do shoot to the south. Okay.
Other than that, you know, it's probably a good area, good wooded area for stuff like that.
I don't think, I wasn't concerned about that range. I don't, I didn't feel like there was a conflict with that range. Do you, do you think there would be?
No, I'm not sure how much they use it right now. And, and, you know, they're still in the construction phases too, so, but they do have some stuff going on out there. I don't know exactly what.
Okay. Thank you.
I think my only, just, you know, repeated kind of consideration would be setting up trails or a course, if you will, and then kind of, I think the, the presentation was to remove that. And I, I just wonder if that wouldn't, if we're, if you would really be able to discourage year-round or seasonal use, and if that increased use. I mean, it certainly seems like the place to, to do it, that of course is where that activity is happening, and concentrate that activity in that area. But I think there's, you know, there could be special, or certainly be conflicts of users with those shooting ranges and the mineral belt or the, the timberline trail system. Because that also is around here on the southern part of the power line trail. So just, you know, maybe, who, who would be responsible for any kind of long-term maintenance or signage or coordination on that, should that need arise?
For signing it as not open to motorize. And since we'd only enter at one point and exit at one point, that signage would, would be pretty straightforward. So, I mean, that's, I, I think that would, that would work. I know, I know people ride all over the place, all over Lake County, you know, whether it's motorcycles or bicycles, or whatever it is, it just, it just happens. But we would try to discourage the use of those trails. And of course, we'd take down all the markings and, and we, you know, try, try and make it as, as, as clear as possible. Do not enter at this point archery range.
Michael, is that a raised hand for another comment?
No.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Commissioner Fiedler or?
I, I mean, yeah, I don't really have a ton more. I think the, you know, so I'm hearing, yeah, I just need to check in with archery range, the gun range, and then sort of like CMC slash the Wheelers to sort of make sure we know how far down those bike trails come. And I appreciate that point about it, there just being like one point where you're entering and leaving, so it's not, you know, there's not like dozens of new enticing entry points. And yeah, and I think, I mean, this isn't really an issue for this event, but I do think it sort of raises the, you know, a sort of longer term question for the county about, you know, we don't, I don't think we really have a policy about new trails or maintaining, you know, like, what we do or don't try to do with informal trails or use on county land. So it just raises for, for me, it would be, it would be awesome if we had a sort of outdoor rec, open space person who, who had a policy and a plan for this stuff. So just for, for me, it flags that we probably need to think about, about having that, so we don't ad hoc it every time. But this seems good. I mean, that seems appropriate, that's right next to the existing motocross track, and, you know, yeah, it's close into town, seems like a good place to have an event, and an interesting thing to, to try out. Oh, I also want to say, I appreciate, you know, taking the time to look at the calendar and, you know, fit it in on a non-already racer event weekend, so. No, I think this, I mean, this seems like a good thing to try.
So, Kim and Jeff, would you guys like to, to speak up a little bit?
Yeah. Hello. I haven't met some of you, but nice to meet you. Yeah, I think the only thing that would concern me is the impact on the shooting range being closed for those four days. That shooting range is used pretty heavily. I spent a lot of time up at the track. There's people that go to the shooting range multiple times a week even. So I would want to do something maybe to make it worthwhile, you know, for those closures. Obviously, like Greg mentioned, the signage well in advance that, that there'll be an event, and the shooting range will be closed, but maybe, personally, I would like to maybe make a donation to the shooting range, if the archery range, for any inconvenience. The track, maybe donate some targets, or, or do something to show our support, you know, that, because they're our closest neighbors there, along with the airport. That's really one of the only other things. And then, you know, I think it is important to make sure those trails aren't used, you know, other than the event, so. Yeah, signage, and even some sort of fencing or barricade along with the, the signage, to just kind of really make sure no one's using that, those trails, yeah. Those are about the only two things I can really think of.
And then that, we're happy to be a part of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Greg and Brian came to us with this idea, and we were willing to, to help out, be a part of it. I just want to make sure it doesn't impact the community in a negative way. We don't want to make any, any people bummed out at the motocross track, so I want to make sure, you know, that they know we're, we're, we're here to just support and help, and, yeah.
Hey, hey Jeff, Brian here. I can work with you. We can do some kind of donation to those ranges to help them out. We'll get together, we'll brainstorm, we'll come up with something for the inconvenience of those being shut down for the weekend. I have no problem with that.
Cool.
Yeah, that sounds good. I would hate to, to bum out some of the, the families, you know. They want to bring up little Johnny to try his new little 22 rifle, and they get up there, and then, oh wow, it's closed, what the heck? There's a dirt biker.
Yeah, well.
Events, not a race.
We'll, we'll put signage, and we'll, we'll put plenty of notice out there too. I don't know if it's possible. Do they do maintenance at those ranges? And maybe that would be a good weekend to get some maintenance done of some sort? Does anybody know?
It's a great idea.
Have a coordinated maintenance cleanup day, fix up some of the, the targets and all that stuff. The double close for the event we're having slash maintenance to the, to the range.
Right, since it's gonna be shut down anyway, so.
Brilliant.
That might be something to think about.
Is there like a Jeff and Kim, if you will, of the shooting range? I don't know if, is it just?
Amber, Amber McGee of the rec department, and, and Michael Arman, between Public Works and Maintenance and Recreation, kind of manage and, and resupply and replace those targets and whatnot. So Amber's on here, and, and Michael's, Michael's here, and manages the, the maintenance folks, so. Certainly a conversation, yeah, yeah.
Awesome.
Sweet. I would like to also say that, you know, these are not new organizations. Rocky Mountain Enduro Circuit's been around almost 50 years. The American Motorcycles Association, almost 100 years. These are, these are organizations that, that work hard to, to, to help events happen. And, and I know that in talking to Brian, he and I are going to do anything we possibly can to keep any kind of impacts to a minimum.
No, thanks. Thanks for bringing it to us and vetting, vetting that before submitting the application, but I think it doesn't seem like there are any large concerns.
Then we'll go to Ann and start, oh, Ann's on the line. We'll go to Ann and start the, the process.
Very good.
All right, thank, thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks Mayor. Thank you, Kim. Thanks, Jeff. Brian, nice to meet you. Thank you.
All right. Hey, thank you.
All right. And, oh, had to get my bearings there, and he's still here. Okay, moving into county manager, continuing the county manager conversations. Last, we had mentioned at our regular meeting, the board had decided to move forward with less of a, kind of national recruitment process, but posting, you know, on multiple formats and platforms to push that out. And so we have a, a job description, a job posting. We have some notes on next steps to incorporate what that workflow and/or responsibility flow might be, and prepping to, to tee up some of those conversations with departments and other elected officials on the integration and, and transition into this kind of operational structure. And I think that the, the goal was to potentially be ready to put up a job posting at the end of the week. Let's see, which of these should I? I think the job posting is pretty clear, but I think we need to firm up the job description. Commissioner Fiedler, do you have comments on that? Should I? I guess we shouldn't pull that up, because we can go through that in greater detail. I'm sorry.
Yes, I am closing down the maps and opening up these files.
Let's see, we also discussed, and I think we have to better formalize a without HR staff currently creating some group to vet the initial round of applicants as they come in. It looks like we may have some, some potential folks that are willing and able to take some time participate in that process with us, potentially from the EDC and neighboring county who is also going through the hiring process now. So, let's see, I'm gonna add that to the list. Needing to formalize.
Sarah, do you see, do you see it being the same group that both does kind of like a screening? And, and is the interview committee?
I mean, I, I, well, the, the group that we had talked about was that being outside of the commissioners. And so vetting, you know, the, the larger pool of applicants that might initially come in to push some narrowed down selection to the board. But I, I could see those folks participating in that interview group for sure. Also open to other, other suggestions. What were your thoughts on that, Commissioner Fiedler?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess, I, I kind of like, unless it's inappropriate for some reason, I'd like at least one of us to sort of be on that screening criteria, because I think, you know, we have a, you know, some, some sense of what we want to see in a candidate. And then, and then I guess I was thinking, yeah, then like a sort of initial interview, and then in my head, we, I hope, assuming we have a great candidate pool, we might narrow it down to two or three people to invite in. Assuming we're at a point where we feel comfortable doing in-person interviews. I mean, I do think it's just great to be able to, you know, meet with, you know, some or even all of the department heads, maybe some other elected officials. You know, just see, you know, tour some facilities, you know, I think it's good to just sort of see, for someone to see what they're getting into.
Yeah. Absolutely. No, I'm in agreement.
You know, one thing, in previous role on the school board, we did public, we, we did sort of what I described, like, you know, the candidates came in, you know, the, the two or three top tier candidates came in for, like, like building tours with principals, so, but also, you know, we, the school district did a town hall, and actually took questions from the community, which I think would be, you know, again, if we're sort of safety-wise comfortable with that, I mean, terrible to do that on Zoom, but possible. But I think it'd be great to see a potential county manager answer questions from the public in person, and see how they handle that.
I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think that makes a lot of sense. And, and the proposed, right now on the posting that needs just a little bit of tweaking, and we'll see if we are able to get it out by the end of the week. On the proposed timeline, which I don't see a big problem with, would be a March 26th publishing, a May 7th deadline for A March twenty-sixth publishing, a May seventh deadline for applications, May fourteenth for selecting first tier of applicants. May eighteenth sending questionnaire to first tier applicants. Selecting applicants for interviews through May, um notifying the interview candidates at the end of May. Scheduling those interviews for the beginning of June. And along with what I would presume, as you're saying, would be, you know, a town hall and or an opportunity. To come in and and tour the county, the facilities, meet, you know, our employees and. And colleagues. Does that timeline sound? Did you have any? Reservation about? Setting that timeline as we kind of have that outlined currently?
It seems realistic to me.
Okay, yeah, I think so. All right, I think that was one of the big um questions on this posting. And then. Jeff, are you, I mean, I'd I'd be happy to nominate you as the as the commissioner to have. To be a contact. I'm not sure if you were offering um or to work. I I think our our fellow. Clear Creek uh county manager.
Commissioner Work Session.
Who is retiring, had uh agreed to be on that vetting committee as well as the EDC director. I'd like, I mean, I'd be definitely be comfortable in having. You join them for that if you have the capacity to do that, Jeff.
Yeah, I I'd be happy, I'd be happy to do that. And Commissioner Marcela just joined too, so I mean she. Kayla had taken the lead on the job description, so I'm happy, I mean, I'm happy to do it, happy to defer if uh anyone else is itching. So, but. Uh, I can.
Welcome, Commissioner Marcel. All right.
Hello.
Hello. Uh, we were just starting the conversation uh. Kayla, after having talked about the event, and so we were just talking about the. Goal to post at the end of the week and talking through the timeline. I'm sorry, I was on that document, not sure at what point you joined the. The meeting. And I did let everyone know at the beginning, you were representing the county at at some legislative considerations, so thank you. And uh I don't think we have a concern with the timeline unless you has specific. Things that you were curious about with that timeline that's in the draft posting. Commissioner Marcel.
No, no, so I had um developed the timeline to accommodate for. Building a committee for vetting um applicants and then developing the interview process. And so. Dola is also able to participate um with that process as well. And so I just wanted to be cognizant of that and then kind of have a. Pretty, pretty clear date for start, like halfway through the year, you know what I mean? Yeah, that's that's kind of the only way that I had drafted that um potential timeline, but I thought that that kind of gave us a little bit of a buffer to work through. Vetting applications and allowed us enough time to collect a variety of applications.
Yep. And so do we have a firm commitment? I know we had an offer, which I think was a good one, or I I appreciated from. Marla at the EDC, but do we think that looks like um Keith Montag, Marla Ackridge, and would that be Christie Dune, our Dola rep? From Dola with uh perhaps one of us on there?
Yeah, I think so. So Keith um is looking for us to um move through. Finalizing some of those details with him and sharing where we're at with these documents today. To see if that's something that his his capacity, he can fit in. Um, but I think that the timeline would line up appropriately with his timeline. And he is interested in in participating, so um as soon as we finalize this, then I can send that to him and and understand what. We need to do to finalize that relationship and and then um I can also connect with with Dola to understand. Who from their organization would be able to help us with that, if it's maybe Christie or Denise. Or another regional partner.
Okay, and then uh Commissioner Fiedler. Would you propose any? Small tweaking of language on the posting um in order to kind of outline. Lake County and uh potential projects or initiatives or strategies and challenges. That we will be looking at, or should we um really insert something pretty concise and. Of course, encourage those folks to kind of contact. Side as that main contact. And give them kind of that broader outline.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I was thinking, ge- given that we have the job description and the job posting sort of in, you know, in the form they're in. I was thinking of adding just like a a very brief sort of one pager on sort of what Lake County is. And modeling off of. The. The 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 school district did a flyer for superintendents. Um, but I think, you know, just describing, you know, the like the size of the county, you know, things like the size of the county. Budget, population levels. And then I think, you know, i- i- it's in part to highlight some of the key issues that a county manager. And the county as a whole would be, you know. Facing, I think it's worth noting that this is a new position. You know, I think that's that that's just a good thing to highlight, but also, you know, I think to some extent, we need to sell ourselves as a as a interesting professionally. Uh exciting place to work and a cool place to live. And I think Lake County, you know, the the city's done great work. So many nonprofits have done great work. The school district does a great work. I think we've sort of earned a reputation. And the county is kind of like getting stuff done. And and uh being kind of forward looking. So anyway, I. Meandering on here, but I think I was sort of one pager kind of highlighting some of the challenges we're having with affordable growth, with the mine closure on the. Sort of horizon. You know, things like that. It'd just be good to give a candidate both uh sort of feel for the challenges, but also some excitement about. About Lake County. So all that being said, I I I think I think leaving the two word documents as they are, the job description, the job posting, but adding just like a one page flyer with some. Background details on the county itself.
Could you take a lead on?
Absolutely, yeah.
Putting that together? Awesome.
Jeff, there's also um a place where we can put some of that information on the website. Like the ICMA website, when we post the job, it'll link automatically to our county website. And so we'll be able to. To add some of those links if if that would be something interesting for us to put there.
Okay, cool.
Did you share your screen by chance, Sarah, or go through the job description together yet?
We did not, no. Would you like to do that? Although I think, I think the, we were looking at the job posting. Um and kind of moving backwards on that timeline. And then I think just kind of tweaking some of the the language on, you know, that selling the county. A little bit. But the the job description, let's see. I'm trying to share now.
I tried to keep the job posting pretty concise, um just because I don't know if there's a character limit. For where you post it. And so I added a little bit of that language um in that very first paragraph that we had talked about last time. Just to ke- keep it kind of concise, but I do like Jeff's idea of adding a flyer with the job posting wherever we post it. But I just am not sure of like a character count when you put it on a website or or what that looks like either, you know.
Yeah, if we have that flyer and ha- even could just have a link. Um for the website and whatnot, and that would be a landing, landing page. That sounds. That sounds like a good kind of direction. Sorry, guys.
Sarah, while you're finding that, I could share the school district brochure real quick so people could see what I was.
Yeah, that'd be great. Let's do that. Thanks.
I can. I can try to do that. Sure, okay, how's that working for folks?
We can see it.
Jeff, where did you guys post that?
You know, the school district, um the the um Colorado Association of School Boards ran the hiring process for us. So I don't know the answer to that exactly. Um, I mean, I think it, I mean, i- as I scroll down, it actually had the. It had the job description and posting. Process on it, so this really was the job description, but it kind of led off with, you know, a description of Lake County and Leadville. A description of like the size and other characteristics of the school district itself and kind of the curriculum they followed. And then just some. You know, employee number. So I was thinking, you know. I was gonna just adapt this, but take out some of the actual like job description parts, since we have that separately. So, so, so sorry, back to your question, the the, and this was posted through um Casby uh and the the process they. They followed.
I like it.
I do too. I I wonder if we can add that to the back of the job description. To as kind of an attachment to the job description. That. Highlight or or put it on the front like a cover sheet type of thing, but I do really like that a lot.
I, and I even like those questions right there. Those will be important. Okay. Um, I don't, I don't, I I think, do you want to go through the job description on a high level? Because I'm curious, it looked like uh maybe, was that taken from an HR job description or were some of those?
Um, kind of, but it was taken from other counties. Kind of a cross collaboration from existing job descriptions for a county manager. So it just contains some pretty. Pretty basic managerial. Functions of a county manager, I guess. But I think. That's kind of where we need to determine and figure out the the relationship and the intersect between a county manager and the human resources department. And what that looks like. Because I think it's done very differently in different locations based on the capacity of their organization as a whole, so. Might be something that we want to talk about. In conjunction with this job description.
Yeah, I think I think we need to, you know, the conversations we have had thus far, we need to continue that. Expectation of kind of the flow of the responsibilities in that role. And um I think those are the conversations that will. We aim to, you know, schedule. Through April and have with other electeds and and the directors. Just to fully kind of vet really what that what that means on a on a higher level and then. To those individual departments. And I think, let's see, Mayor, are you seeing my screen?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I I was gonna add, I mean, on that, a- as I read through the job description, that was really the one part, like the the additional job functions that. Called out being like the first point of contact for human resources and performing other human resources. I think we should maybe tweak that a little bit. To. I mean, I see the county manager as overseeing the new HR, you know, manager or whatever the title is. You know, for that function, but I don't, that, to me, that sounds a little scary to a potential applicant to have to do, you know, to to sort of be the. It it sounds like they're going to be the HR director as well.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. I see what you're talking about now, Sarah, now that I can see your screen. I apologize, Jeff, for interrupting you, but I did take this from. Um, our human resources director's job description and use it as a template, but I did not change those things in those bullet points that you had highlighted, Sarah. I apologize and I apologize for cutting you off, Jeff.
No, no worries.
Yeah, and I think just tweaking like um managers plans and coordinates major projects. I think there's. We just had to talk through that a little bit, because to me, that looks like we're doing like all of it across the board, but I think. You know, those those responsibilities certainly live with the directors and departments still, uh at least as I see it. Um and that county manager will kind of ma- manage and maintain and kind of the status of all of that. To communicate with the board and back and forth um on progress. And whatnot, and through, you know, permitting, well, uh I guess I should say. The but the the board permitting and 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 departments aligning, you know, those projects. With policies and and long-term goals that are set. Um, which I do think we out- outline just fine throughout um some of these other bullets, but.
Yeah, and I I think it's in here, but to, I mean, just I think agreeing with you, like to me, sort of sharpening up the notion that, you know, the the county manager. Is kind of like a a a conduit, almost, I mean, he's a two-way street, but it's like when when we have either questions or new policy ideas or guidance. You know, the county manager is who that sort of flows through to work with the appropriate department directors to make that happen. And then vice versa, when there are issues that arise from, you know, on ongoing work that need. You know, board approval or discussion. You know, that that the county manager works with department heads to bring, you know, issues and questions before the B O C C.
No, I agree. Um, I like. Your comments shared, Commissioner Fiedler, and um maybe it it will just take. Kind of running through more specific comments on this document. For Commissioner Marcela to. Edit. Just a a little bit and um get pretty close. Do we want to have all three documents ready for that posting, I presume? And maybe that would be a little bit of a tight turnaround for. Friday posting, but with that, with a kind of flyer, if you will, I'll call it that. What kind of timeframe? Might we need to? To. Wrap that up?
Um, I think if Friday has a tendency to be a tight turnaround, if we could go for like Monday of next week, that would be. Appropriate too. Um, and I don't think that that would necessarily change the overall timeframe. Because that would still be adequate time for us to gather applications, you know what I mean? Like if we just push back the posting date by a day or two, that would still give us adequate time. To have the the posting open and to acquire those applications. So I think if we wanted to to aim for Monday to allow for us to do some of those additional. Prep pieces in the job description and to finish the commenting on the um job description and for Jeff to. To start that flyer, then put it all together, that would be appropriate for sure.
That sounds good. Can I ask one small question in terms of getting that ready? Do, if the flyer wants to look slightly nice, um, you know, more than just a word doc. Uh, do we, is there someone, is there a staff person who can help with? Putting, you know, dropping some graphics in and sort of a little bit of color and sprucing, sprucing that up?
You know, I I don't know if Kaylee and the. You know, I I don't know if Kaylee in the Office of Emergency Management or Amber would be able to help, but they quickly come to the front of my mind with the information that we've had to push out for COVID and and rec programming. So I don't know if they would be appropriate choices, or I think Kristen from Human Services would also be really good at at assisting with that development as well, if you would like for me to get a hold of her.
Yeah, I I I can go ahead and contact them directly just when I'm ready with the with the content.
Right. And then so after posting and getting that for next week's timeframe following I think following that, and perhaps would it make sense to combine the opportunity to comment on the procurement policy revisions and also open that to questions or comments from electeds and directors through the same process, just to collect those. And I to to schedule the conversations following that with directors and elected officials on the on the manager position.
So I think in order for that to be the most productive, it would be probably most beneficial for us to have two separate meetings on that. So one dedicated to the manager position and then one dedicated to procurement, just so that it's not overload. But I think if we could do two meetings next week, one like two work sessions next week with directors and elected officials, that might be that might be our best bet because I think it's important to get that stuff kind of locked down in the next couple of weeks for sure.
All right, well, with some of those immediate drafting tasks in front of us, and then I think just nailing down the the participation from those folks on that initial vetting group. Is there are there any other items to be sure to get to? For a posting?
Sorry, Commissioner Mudge, I I just wanted to make sure that I understand my role appropriately. Do you want me to finish developing that committee for vetting those applicants? And and give them that timeframe to make sure that we have a robust committee for that?
I wonder, I mean, if we want to decide which one of us might be on that initial vetting committee as well, and then whoever that is perhaps takes those reins and starts communicating with those folks?
Yeah, I'm I'm good with whatever you guys.
That makes sense. So yeah, so it's just, yeah.
Okay. So Jeff, it sounded like you would be interested in being in being on that committee. So if I hand you over those contacts that I've made, then I'll just let you take the lead on that. Is that okay?
If that's good with you, that's great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, and Jeff, I might have another contact for some of the graphic work that could be relatively quick too. So if that's if staff doesn't have capacity, let me know and we can I could probably assist there as well. And I'll look at I'll look at some of the calendar and pull out some of those times. I can contact Katie regarding what the procurement, that kind of timeline and calendar looks like so that we're not overlapping with that necessarily. And we can, I think we can go from there, maybe put out the posting once we have that finalized, push that out to the county departments and elected officials and offer a few times and opportunities to then meet with the board in you know, sharing any questions and having a conversation about what that role will mean for the county over the next two weeks.
Yeah, I would say Commissioner Marcel had put just for the three of us at this point, had blocked off a time next Tuesday, the 30th at 1:00 P. M. For a meeting with directors on the county manager sort of roles and how that new position will work.
Sarah, I just picked that time because it was available on all of our calendars. But if you think that that's too early or or something like that, we can I can definitely try to send out another calendar invite for us and then get an email spun up to elected officials and department directors about that.
Commissioners, this is Chris. I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I heard correctly, it's proposed for next Tuesday at 1:00. For some reason, I have that on my calendar as the review of as a, let me see. I I thought we had a work session on building and land use stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Time.
Okay, you're right, Chris, you're right.
It can be added on. I just wanted to raise that because I know that that's what Katie and I have on our calendar for that day at 1:00. But obviously, we can change that and I see Paul and Ann are on here too, so.
You're right, Chris, you're right. And we also have a board of review meeting that evening, so it might be helpful for us to have that conversation with building and land use. Commissioner Mudge, what do you what are your thoughts? Do you want to combine the two in a work session next Tuesday, or would you like to do them separately next week?
The land use conversation and the county manager position conversation?
Yeah, with elected officials and directors.
I think that typically to have the best use of everyone's time and you get good participation, a dedicated block of time for directors and elected officials. And and when we were talking about communicating with electeds and directors on the revision and review of the procurement policy, I thought that we had landed on, you know, setting a block of a few hours and then allowing some folks to come in to to share questions individually or sign up for 15 or 20 minutes. And and have the opportunity or offer them, you know, to stay perhaps throughout a general like group discussion, but I might be misunderstanding where we landed on getting the best participation from from directors and electeds.
I don't know if Crystal and Jeff have done that calendar invite or not, but I did see an email from Crystal go out for directors and elected officials to sign up for individual time slots.
Yeah, that's right. I'd have to, I don't know the current status of like how many have gotten scheduled, but I do know that the I can't remember if it was a doodle poll or some different times, but that did go out.
Let's uh maybe let's just try to get the calendar coordinated and see if we can't pick for four time slots or four days over the next couple of weeks. I don't know that we want to combine the two on Tuesday. And I think if we're finalizing or presenting and sharing those final docs on Monday, we might want a little more time for any kind of I think we lost Kayla. Any kind of changes or finalizing that and be sure to get that out and posted that that'll be taking some of our time. I I would either push for the end of next week or or the following. Commissioner Fiedler, what are your thoughts on that?
Sorry, I lost you there for a second. Are you talking pushing pushing the procurement policy later?
No, the the no, that's okay. I think let's coordinate the calendar with the procurement policy dates that were pushed out and then get the posting finalized and dispersed on certain formats that we plan to post on and then work on sending out and picking three or four days to share with electeds and directors.
Okay, I'll I'll okay, so so I'll circle back with Crystal and see what dates were were offered and would have been confirmed.
So tomorrow is the review for procurement with Katie from 3:00 to 4:00 for directors and electeds.
Great, thank you, Crystal.
Yep.
Did you get any other responses, Crystal, or was that just put out as a block to join? Did you kind of do an R C P on that at all?
That was based on those who had filled out the doodle poll and with the best time slots that worked for everybody. So that was one of the time slots.
Excellent. Okay. Great. Well, maybe we can take the opportunity there to 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 kind of ask and request format and timing on on the next conversation of the managing position.
And just so you're aware, I know Commissioner Fiedler is aware, but I I am out the 31st through the 6th, just so you know.
All right, well, it sounds like we'll work on getting some of that language finalized, the group arranged and and organized and then a flyer. And then do we have, I think we have a list of all posting formats that we'd like to disperse the job description out to. I think that's a pretty good task list for Monday.
All right, that sounds good.
All right. Great. Any other? I don't know that we have any other. See, it looks like we'll have a couple of directors out, and I don't think that'll be the only opportunity. I mean, this is going to be again, an ongoing conversation about the development of that role and that position and and how that you know, how 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 that can really be meaningful, a meaningful position in the in the county and how it's going to benefit the organization wholly, so. No, no worries on being out for a week. It's not the last chance to have that conversation. Anything else, Commissioner Fiedler? I don't think I have any other questions on next steps.
No, I think that's good.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you. I think then we'll gather tomorrow, convene tomorrow for procurement policy questions to legal and going through that document. I guess on that note though, too, again, I'll just take the chance to kind of reiterate, you know, working on the commissioners work on a handbook revision, procurement policy revision. It'd probably be nice to be sure we have a full inventory of job descriptions and maybe a couple of other things to to kind of get in place before the hiring of this the for this position so that you know, they're they're better prepared and some of the foundations better, the gaps are filled for for that role.
Yeah, well, I guess one thing to say there, I think, and we we didn't put it on here to discuss, but we do have an HR manager position and you know, that that will, I think, will go out, you know, kind of around the same time as the county manager position, we're ready to get on that. So yeah, that's sort of core support around the county manager will hopefully be in place or well underway.
Yeah. Good point. Thanks. Okay. All right. Well, thanks for your time and I think you will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye bye.